Alderman Motley, here. Alderman Hudson.
Here.
Alderman Wilkins. Alderman Deckard.
Here.
Alderman Rogers.
What's it?
Alderman Mathis.
Yeah.
Correct, yes.
In allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the law of the British States, in our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You take the motion to go into closed session.
I make the motion to go into closed session.
So I guess.
So me and Sander, like you said, you didn't need to go into closed session.
No, we do. We do. Second line, I'm sorry.
Don't need to second it.
Do we need to read the whole thing now?
Yes. During the meeting, the board of all of them, they elected to go in closed session and hold a closed vote, and the purpose of such closed session and closed vote shall be, one, as provided for under section sixteen point zero one two one, the advice statutes of Missouri for legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body and any confidential or privileged communication between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys, or two, as provided for under section sixteen point zero one two three of the advice statutes of Missouri for hiring, firing, discipline, or promoting a particular employee by a public governmental body.
All right, I have a moment for a second. If you don't want to close session, it's ready of, uh, vote.
Alderman Motley? Yes. Alderman Deckard, excuse me, Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Deckard?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Nagley?
Yeah.
All right, we now, uh, time for closed session. Uh, Tara, I guess, how does one during, uh, the general, uh, I guess, if this were?
Yeah, I'm gonna mute you on here, um, I'm trying to connect you to my phone and then we'll work.
Oh, just my carry.
He can get done everything.
Just carrying on my phone.
We won anyway.
Yeah, we're all, we're ready to go.
Okay, well, we, uh, we came back from closed session, back in general session, uh, the votes were taken, the votes were taken, was to, uh, we're going to move back into closed session, and that's what we've done. Uh, voting would be noted that, uh, I don't see, uh, your funny dance is, is being removed from the, uh, agenda for now.
Those would take a long.
So I guess we'll have to vote on that when we get there, Chris.
Uh, now, for a comment from citizens, uh, first off, say, I have had no bodies, anybody with more than any comments from citizens that need to rub their attention, and is anybody in the, in the crowd to speak at that point, please, huh?
No.
None.
None, anybody in the campers wanting to speak?
I'm getting head nods, no.
Okay, okay, thank you, sir, for that hesitation. And then I'll vote, come in citizens, and then we'll move us to, uh, I know seven, uh, consent agenda for, uh, I'm going to take a motion to accept the minutes, uh, before show the consent agenda from A through H, which is the order for all the five minutes, uh, public works, uh, utilities, uh, general, I mean, uh, government and public safety, planning, zoning, with the, uh, the collective report, uh, air support, uh, activity reports, and then the financial reports.
I make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
The first and second to approve the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote, vote, move it fast, that moves us to, uh, I know eight, uh, accounts payable over twelve hundred and fifty dollars, uh, total, uh, being six hundred and seventy one thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and twenty four cents, uh...
And will we accept the accounts payable over one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for a grand total of six hundred and seventy one thousand, two hundred and seventy seven dollars and twenty four cents?
Second.
Have a first and a second to approve the accounts payable, not with value, since I said one thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and twenty four cents, all in favor?
Aye.
Although, motion passed, that moves us to number nine, wastewater treatment, uh, facility project update, um, questions?
The guys are here.
Get me a screen up here so he can hear us.
That would probably be helpful.
Mayor Cox, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Gary and Blake. Good evening. Okay, I have a few updates for the board tonight, uh, on the wastewater project, so I'll just start in on those, no particular word, but I've just got some things I feel like the board should be updated on. Uh, first off, the contractor for the basins, the earthwork, Fisher Grading, they are over their schedule, I think most of you know that, but I just wanted to indicate that again. As the project manager for this project, I do not recommend that we move towards extending that, I would leave it right where it's at, continue to track the days, track the effort, and leave it as it is, I don't think we should take pressure off of them. Uh, there are certainly supply chain issues in the water wastewater industry, but from my standpoint, that dirt has always been there and it, it had no supply chain issues with it, so I, I recommend we leave that as it is. Questions on that for Fisher, I'll kind of go through, you guys can jump in at any time.
We know how many days behind they are at this point?
I don't have it in my file, we're tracking it, we alerted them that we are tracking days.
You know about roughly?
Say about, we go on sixty.
Sixty?
Yeah. Sixty days.
I wasn't looking for an exact number, but it gives us an idea, so they're about two months behind, and it was what, five hundred dollars a day for?
Substantial, half substantial, and then additional five hundred.
Five hundred and half final completion.
It was what, roughly a month between those two?
Yes.
So you got thirty days at five hundred dollar a day, and then?
Good memory. We've actually extended Fisher once, um, as you will know, they sent in this room right here in January and asked for extension, and they had just a few more weeks to go, so this has been a history with them, they should have been done a long time ago. Now, I will add some good news to that, the basins are under test, they have water in them, they're getting tested, we're halfway through our thirty day test, right now, I look, I got the data in front of me, we have three sets of barrels in each basin, I think they're gonna pass. Okay, so I don't know what the next fifteen days holds, but on November first, we'll know the official results, usually if you have a problem, you're gonna know right off the bat, we're not seeing anything major, so that's good. Um, over on the basin subject, excess dirt, I know Alderman Landon, you mentioned something there, um, at one point with the dirt, and that's been a subject, there had, there was a small amount of excess cut, excess company, you have dirt over. Uh, at first, the contract calls that the city can, at their discretion, have that put wherever they want, um, the contract, we wanted it along a specific drive, contractor added it to a berm, effectively making a berm, um, not at the same speed, which is fine, uh, not, not where we initially wanted it, but talking with Matt, talking with our team, doesn't affect the design and doesn't affect the city, we feel like that's something we're, um, accepting at this point as a group. So, questions on that? Had to slope a little higher than three to one, which actually makes it easier to maintain, anything to add to that, you good with it? We got, I think we've got bigger problems with them than probably get, getting into that, so. Uh, okay, that handles the Fisher piece, now Schmidt, Schmidt is their irrigation company.
About the seed and straw.
Seed and straw was, uh, did not follow specifications, which we just indicated that to them, Blake's, Blake's alerted them that they did not follow the specs for that, specs call for the ground to be, uh, seedbed to be prepared, seed to be sowed, fertilized, and mulched, they, they only seeded on, um, hard compacted clay.
Topless clay.
Topless clay, it will not be effective, we've alerted into that fact. So, you have not paid for restoration, I would not pay for it, plain and simple.
So, should that have been inspected before they seeded it, should somebody have looked at that before they seeded that?
Uh, I don't think it should have been, it could have been, and, and you guys paid for us hourly, we'd come to the site as needed, and if that was something that you needed us to look at, we could, it's kind of on them to redo it if they didn't do it right, I, I wouldn't call an engineer to look at, uh, seeding, or, you know, we're here.
They should have known what needed to be done there, I mean, that's probably the simplest thing on the.
Well, I'm just, look who we're talking about, I don't want to know.
Yeah. You know, we've taken a lot, and then we're gonna get into this, we've taken a lot of energy the city has, and so have we, into this, it's eaten a lot of the budget up on this project, handling this through, and every, every step of the way, so, uh, it's been unfortunate, and hopefully they can finish the project, that's what we're all hoping for. Anything else on the grading contractor?
So are they intending to seed it, put their proposal and seed it properly, or not?
Like, what are they? Yeah.
What's their plan?
He just emailed before we got into the, the general session, but he just sent me a sticker at, at MFA, what they put down last week, Thursday?
Last thir, last Wednesday.
Wow, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Kentucky thirty-one, fescue and wheat.
Yeah, and I told him that he only hit one out of the three, the seed fertilizer, mulch, fertilizer, but, uh, he's aware of that, and the specs call out that he can do, he has to do multiple applications to establish growth, and that's clear today in the specifications.
So he's gotta go back in there and fill it up or disc it up?
Yeah, he's got established growth.
Yes.
That, that won't happen, will it? Probably.
I'd say, tell them.
Wait and hold your breath!
Yeah.
No, and. And we'll have to watch that, we'll have to watch that, no doubt, but, just like everything on this part, but, um, we, he was made aware that after he did that, no doubt. So we won't recommend that get paid until there's grass, or until he, well, until he does it right, that, uh, is what I would recommend. On Schmidt irrigation, now this is a little different, uh, Schmidt irrigation, they've had, they've had some setbacks, I would say they backburnered the city, I'm, I'm gonna cut you straight on that, I'm gonna shoot it straight, they backburnered the city, they've also had some, uh, I think one of the owner's grandsons died during the project, they've had some, some tragedies, and I will, I will say that, I want the council to know that, they've had some supply chain issues, we have parts coming in next week for them, we're hearing, and so, this one here is a project manager, I'll just give you my stance on it, I would extend Schmidt's contract, they would like to get the crops out and get back in there and finish the project, and so I don't have anything tonight on that, but I, I recommend we move forward with they, next time, I re, I recommend we extend the date, I want to know an exact date that this is it, I don't want to extend them again, they haven't been extended any, okay, they were supposed to be done in August.
I thought we gave them that extension when their grandchild or whatever passed away.
The irrigation?
Yes.
I don't think so, I don't think so.
We did, because you all brought it to us, and said.
And the parts weren't gonna be here till November, or?
And we gave them the extension.
There was four contractors.
The one, whichever one grandson passed away, we gave them an extension on it, because of that.
And you, you, I'm not recalling that, Landon, but you may be right, there was four contractors, we've extended two of the four already, that I, that are in, that's in my memory right now, and perhaps three of the four, if you're right.
There was one who was waiting, waiting for pump fixtures or something.
That was part four. I do, I do know that.
That was marvelous.
That was.
Yeah.
That was marvelous.
You agree with the recommendation, Luke?
So I, I talked to Gary, uh, this morning on it, um, I, I think we, we extend, but we don't overextend, I think we need to make sure that we keep it pretty tight. Just because I don't want to get too far out, I don't want to get into, a lot of these pivots have to be probably drained and winterized, so we can't even, if we have to go test them, it's gonna be a whole, you know, in the middle of winter, it's gonna be a nightmare, so I don't want to get it too late into the game where we can't do that in the winter, and then I don't want to make them wait until next spring, when we should be fully opable, hopefully, and then we're just now doing startup, so, I, I think if we extend it, I think we need to, um, I think Gary mentioned this morning, he was gonna let them kind of shoot a date back to us, uh, what they think is reasonable, and then we say, yeah, you're nailed on that.
So what are we waiting on crop wise, on whose?
Um, both, so I think Rhodes is, has two fields left that have beans in them that we're waiting, um, and they, the farmers did reach out and ask if we would hold off until, which reasonable?
Yeah.
And I think, but Noyt's may have one with beans that we're waiting on, that may be two.
So we're waiting on three fields with beans?
Yep. The corn, the first field that we got the makeshift pump up to was corn, it's out, um, and I think they're gonna dive into that one here pretty quick, but the other fields, they're gonna hold off until they get those crops in.
Do we have a date on when the Noyt and Rhodes would have the beans up?
The way they've been running, I'd say, you know, pretty quick, I don't, I wouldn't imagine it would be any more than probably three weeks, so, I can get in touch with both of them and kind of get a ballpark of what they see in their future, as long as the weather holds, and then if they say, hey, two or three weeks are ready, we can kind of work with them on that date.
Because when's their contract up?
Schmidt, it's in August, it's past.
We, we did, we did not extend them at that, we talked about some of the stuff that, uh...
Well, it sounded like it was Martin that, I think, and then I remember.
So we discussed, because they were kind of like, it was right at that two week mark that they had been, um, their contract date came up, they had right there at the tail end that they had the grandchild that passed away, so we told them, you know, please take your time with that, we're, we're gonna leave you alone, you get back with us when you guys are ready to start working again, and then, uh, I mean, they, they have been a little more reactive here in the last probably month, but it's, it's because they're not dealing with their other irrigation customers that they normally are throughout the year, so. I think we, I think we can extend it, but I think we have to make sure that we're, we're firm with the date, and tell them that if, if you're not there, then here's the consequence behind it, so.
Good. Any other questions on that, I got another topic or two. Good, okay, uh, let's do a financial checkup here on the project, it's been a little while, when we broke ground, the project had one hundred and eleven thousand dollars in contingency, okay? Right now, we have two hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars in contingency, okay? So we have more contingency right now than the day we started. Okay, and that is including with the basin repair, you guys know that there was a spot about the size of a basement, but their nice sized home would be, what, two thousand square feet, well, that's exactly the hole in the ground that they dug and fixed, and that basin is holding, as of the fifteen days, it's looking good, so that was successful, at least to this point, we do have more money in the, in the project than when we started. Um, let's see, Blake, did you have anything on that, uh, do you guys have any questions on, I think at this point right now with Martin, we're still waiting on the parts to get those, the rest of the electronics in there, out of the four parts of this project, three of them are close to being done, and the one, the most complex, complicated one is still yet to be done, but it's up out of the ground, so the chances of running into issues with Mother Earth are about gone.
The basin test is gonna probably pass, and then what's, what's our deadline, I think I've asked this four hundred times, but it's gotta all be done by when, or it's just a basin test?
Oh, it's more.
For DNR, I mean, we had to have this done at a certain time, that is what, you remember, anybody remember?
Yeah, here's the thing with that.
So it must not be, we, we must not have a penalty deadline with DNR?
You're fine.
We're fine.
Because, yeah, there, there is a date, if, if I had my, all my files in front of me, I could tell you a date that DNR, that drove the whole reason for this project, they are not, you don't have penalties, you don't have fines, you, because you're.
We're, we're good, we're not gonna, we're not gonna be, if this drags on all next year, on all the little, we're good.
And most of that, that really had to do with, that we were doing something with our wastewater, the Martin portion of it, we can work around for a period of time.
Yeah, so, uh, Blake and I, and Tara sat in on our inspection of the projects, uh, shoot, it's probably been a little month ago, so, um, and, and the representative from DNR told us, you know, hey, things are coming up, we see it all over, if we have to extend it, there's, it's no big deal, just another piece of paper that we sign and say we're just ending the date, that's how I took it at least, so.
And we, we actually had a call with them too, as we both, if you're ready with that?
Yep.
Okay, last thing on the wastewater was our contract, uh, as you guys know, we work hourly for the city, so what we do, we charge for what we do, when we don't come, we don't charge, uh, that's just exactly what goes in, in Blake and I's timesheet, on the drinking water, we came in over a hundred thousand under budget on that, and did charge the city, you know, whereas the contractors, if they charge a hundred thousand dollars for something and it costs them thirty, they get seventy thousand in profit, that's not how our contracts are with you all, um, we set our budget up for this project for the wastewater, based on twelve months of construction, that was to be ended in August, we ran out of money in thirteen months, indicated, I remember, Alderman Rogers, you kind of asked me at the time, that's over the summer, hey, what's it gonna be, uh, sixty to seventy thousand, uh, was kind of my shooting from the hip, um, tonight, I've got the amendment in the, in the book to increase our, uh, budget for this project, just for seventy two thousand, uh, I would like to stay with this project, like I said, we're out of budget, uh, we've tried to apply our hours the best we could to it and try to save as much as we can, Matt's taking a whole lot of stuff to keep us out when it doesn't make sense, you know, anytime we come to a meeting like this, we charge our time, clearly, because, you know, Blake and I want to get paid too, so, um, that's what we were asking the city for, we'd like to see this project through, I'd say that what's unfortunate is the simplest parts of the project were just done, the earthwork was pretty straightforward, we're building a pond, but we had to, we, we've had a lot of conversations around that and the supply chain, and so the, the most complex pieces are yet to come, and we'd like to see this thing through. Um, if you guys did that, uh, voted for that tonight, you could have a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars in contingency left in the project, assuming we actually.
At this point, we're still under the budget, is what you're saying, about ninety K if we prove seventy?
Oh, no, it was two thirty seven.
Oh.
Minus seventy, you'd be at a hundred and sixty five thousand.
Fifty shekels out, yeah.
So, uh, and that's assuming we hit it all, I mean, the way, the way Matt's been handling things, it's been lighter lately, but there hasn't been a ton of activity, we're gonna hit hard whenever Martin gets out here, we're gonna have multiple times a week, and they'll have a lot more activity, whether it's for fitting, and then startup will be a week, that'll, that'll be a full on week of everybody, all hands on deck, you see that through.
So you, but you believe your estimate of seventy two thousand's enough?
I do, and I, I set that to where I, I don't expect to come back, now, if this thing goes on for, if it's going on a year from now, I can't guarantee, it has to get done, because it's the more, as time goes on, it can be the same scope of things, just continue to, conversations continue to be had, so, I do, and I would ask the council to move forward with that to keep us engaged in, in through the project, it's all fundable through DNR, the grant will apply to it, the loan will apply to it, uh, it's not out of the city's, uh, budget, so to speak, it's part of the project, so, any questions on that? Comments?
Is that the amendment one on our?
Yes, I know that's further down the list.
Anything else?
Um, I could speak to ten A and B, but, um, that's, I guess that's at the council's discretion, are, are you Mayor Cox, if you'd like anything spoken to on those two?
Yeah, he, he minds what, what is for.
Okay, ten A, um, this is, if I was the council, I'd want to hear, I'd want to hear this for sure, um, so I was thinking about you on my way up. Uh, Martin, general contractors for the water treatment plant, so I'm saying, I think drinking water again, you're gonna have to kind of go back to the drinking water piece there, um, that, they are asking for their final pay request, part of the pay request is for HVAC work, the rest of the pay request is for retainage, so understand that this is, this is one hundred percent payment, including retainage, for the drinking water plant to Martin, that's what's been requested. Um, uh, that's up to the council, you may want to, you may want to discuss that with Sydney, or you may want to, you may know what you want to do with that, so, I don't have much else to offer on that, ten B is a standard request, so this, ten B is how we get the money from DNR, the grant and loan funding, to pay for the project, and that's where we put all the invoices in from the contractor to get the, to get money from DNR within ten days, and then that's where Tara will be kicking out those checks to the contractors, and getting those folks paid, uh, once DNR pays you, how that works. So that's just getting that approved, so that gets the message, anything to add to it? Uh, any questions on timing on that, I know we typically done it on Friday, but that was kind of, I know.
That's fine, um, as long as we have them by like four o'clock on Friday, we can get them on, um...
I try to have them sooner, but sometimes contractor doesn't have all their things in the basket, but.
Hey, here's a question, and I'm, I'm preaching, on all of my documentation, uh, where, where is your, is yours on this month, your seventy two thousand, sorry?
No, sir, that's only for, uh, these are reimbursement requests, and so, it's only for. No, nope, nope, not at all, uh, not on the reimbursement request, but the amendment is on the council, or packet for eleven A.
Eleven A is the seventy two characters.
Yeah, that's, well, that's not fine, okay, we'll make sure.
Questions on drinking water, wastewater, or like?
So if we paid Martin out, what does that do with our slaker, do we then start dealing with it then?
So that's where I would suggest, I'm gonna allow you guys to go ahead and talk with Sydney on that, whether, how you guys want to deal with that request, so they have, they have indicated that they've completed the job and would like the retainage paid out, so that's something that.
And that's the ten A?
Uh, ten A would be something you'd want to run by Sydney. Ten A on the, on the agenda. Keep in mind, part of it is HVAC that's unrelated to the slaker, and they did the work, the other part of it's retainage, which applies to the entire project, five percent, which would apply a little bit to everything, so, something to consider.
Personally, I'd like to see those requests broken out separately.
I can tell you those numbers if that would help, or we can go offline with it.
Do we need to do it differently?
We could go back to Martin, and have them flow out differently, and just.
I, I would prefer to have them broken out separately, since we do have the slaker thing still up in the air, I mean, HVAC's HVAC, I mean, I can understand how pain for the work they did there, but.
I guess, and HVAC's working, isn't it?
Yeah.
But.
Sorry, I was assuming that, because you were.
Yeah, no, no, we, we've, we've got a checklist that, um, I think everything pretty well other than the slaker is done, right?
And my request would be that those get broken out as two separate things, so we can discuss and vote appropriately.
Sure, let me throw another, let me just throw some numbers at you, uh, so let's say that the retainage is five percent, which it is, and let's say that the project is about a two million dollar project, which it was, that would be, pardon me? Pardon me? Uh, that would be around a hundred thousand in retainer, right? Uh, five percent of, of two million. Uh, that applies to the whole project. If we pay for the HBAC, then you'll be holding a hundred thousand dollars on Martin roughly, probably more than that, 'cause I think it was over two million. So, that applies to the whole project, but the slaker item has already been paid in full. It's, so, I bet it's more than a hundred, just see though. So. Does that make sense? Retainer's is just the percent on the whole job that they've earned. Every time they get paid for something, they, you hold the five, but then the slaker's over here and it was paid because they installed it and it ran and they get, they earned that. So, but we can break those two out separate.
I, I would, my request would be to break them that separately unless everybody disagrees with me. I think we should evaluate them separately, 'cause they're still.
Slakers run, but it's never run correctly.
Yeah, I, I, I have a hard time.
I have a hard time.
Final project and final payment.
He could quit at any time.
And we especially need our city attorney involved in that.
So is not.
That's why I wanted to speak to you, because if I was in your seat, that's what I would say.
Any, Matt, any concern on the wastewater request that's on there?
Didn't an airplane.
Do you have any question, your slaker?
Uh, what do they got? I just, I apologize, I don't even have a sheet. It's just.
Our invoices.
Oh, okay. No, nothing on that portion of that. On the, the pay request, Blake.
Still hurting me with dirt. Still not happy about the.
Problems with the.
'Cause it was supposed to be hauled off, it was bid to be hauled off, the job.
Contractors getting them back to Tara.
And then we said we'd put it on our license so we could use it.
I mean, is that something where we can say if you don't have.
Who told, who, who made the decision? For him to spread it out.
Chris is on speakerphone, we tried one conversation at the time, please. It could be, it could be hard to get attention to two conversations when you're in the room. I think Chris is gonna get lost with two on speakerphone, so.
Where we at? We're talking about dirt, I think, here, is what they were.
Dom's still hurt about that.
All the magazines.
Because it was bid to haul, everybody that bid that job, bid it to haul the dirt off the site.
Yep.
Then we gave it to Fisher and we cut it back. You can leave it on site, but we want it piled over here. And everybody knows it was a bomb site out there at one point. And now it's all spread out and we have no extra dirt in case we needed it for anything. I mean, I'm just.
It wasn't a concession we made in a vacuum, I agree with you. You're exactly right, it was bid that way, they did it their own way, it's there. Matt and I talked and we've got a, a lot of big issues with them right now. And as a, as a group, we've decided, hey, we're majoring in the minors, if we pick on this, we might not get that thing done. And so, with it being a relatively small amount of dirt, we've moved on to other fish, bigger fish to fry with that in mind. But I agree with you, I mean, I'm not.
So how long does it have for the grass to come up? How long does that stand?
He has to, it has to grow, it, it, there is no, he has to grow the grass once he doesn't get the money.
I think, yeah, the spec, it says it has to establish a good, good growth.
Establish through the whole job site.
Yes.
He, he landed on clay though? He hired the grass seed on clay?
He just spread the grass, broadcast it and it landed on hard compact.
He had MFA come out and broadcast it.
With no way it's gonna work.
No, it's not. Uh, that, I, I reached out to them whenever, I, so I, I got the specs, booked it up. My biggest concern is, is that if this thing becomes operational for us, in the wintertime, without anything grown out there, we're not even gonna be able to get access to it. You know, we took out the gravel road for financial reasons. Now, if this thing gets sloppy on us, we're not, I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna walk through mud.
So we're gonna run it up.
Where are we at on the gravel? He can bring this up.
Uh, we ain't getting it.
We're doing, we, we also.
We change order out of that.
Yeah, we change.
We're, we're, we gotta supply that ourselves.
No, you don't have gravel at your other sites. We took it out, it's, it's, was there, it was something easy to take out to save money on the.
And it's on us to get it out there. So we have to put the gravel down, right?
If we want it.
Well, if you want, if you want.
We need it, don't we?
Um, we, we might need a little bit of it, but I, we didn't need the full roadway. Uh, we, we, we have options that throughout the next couple of years to phase in, you know, we, we have ways to do that. Uh, but for this winter alone, we need some.
But that doesn't have to be.
Yes.
DNR's not gonna come out and say, this is what was bid, why isn't all this done?
No, they, they.
They, they don't want any fines in that?
They approved the change orders.
Oh, they did approve, no gravel.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
So he doesn't have no erosion control out there either on any of it. Should he have, he should, probably should have erosion control between the two basins.
Heading over there. Yes, he should.
He has no erosion control out there at all. The only erosion's along the creek at the tree box. Cell fence, there's no cell fence anywhere else, only junk stuff.
It's down now. It's down now.
Right.
Cell fence is down.
They should be maintaining it.
Yeah, it's, it's down, they, they, so they, they worked up, you know, down there where we.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know if they hit it with the machine or what, but it's, it's down, it's, there's no erosion control whatsoever out there.
So there is no erosion control out there, I'd say.
Yep. Yep.
We will note that as well, Linda, you're exactly right.
When's the splash fan supposed to be put in?
He said next week.
How's it gonna do that with the full water?
That's what I exactly asked him. It's gonna be quite a deal.
So, so what more do we need to discuss on, on the lack of, on DNR's job? At this point? Any other question?
It's in the line.
Yeah.
That's all, head mayor.
Okay, all right. Thank you for your time and, and.
We'll get through this, won't we?
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Yes, we will.
All right, that moves us to the action agenda. Number ten, finance. Uh, request, uh, the water treatment plant, the program, let's hear it, request number eight.
Where is?
This is a, because by the way, they got three.
It's a motion and it's one that we're saying we're gonna hold at this point until they can break out the HVAC separately.
This is ten, that's right, that's the one we requested, so, that's.
So I move that we post, I, I move that we postpone ten A.
So, November first.
I have a second from Terry to, uh, multiple ten A, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes, it'll be broken out, that's what we need from you guys, as a move forward, please, uh.
What was that date?
Eleven twenty one.
And then that moves us to B. Wastewater, request number nine.
I move that we approve wastewater request number nine.
Second.
And speaking to Terry, the, the, from wastewater, request number nine, all in favor?
What was wastewater nine? What was that?
That was all the engineering fees that.
Okay, I thought that was A, eleven A.
That's the amendment, that's the amendment to the contract. That's the seventy-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, the eleven, eleven A's where it kicks in down there, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, I have request number nine, uh, B, passing. Moves us to C.
I don't think we voted, we didn't vote.
Okay.
La, Landon asked a question and, uh, nobody voted, so.
Got it, okay, got it, okay.
So Chris did ask, all in favor?
Aye.
All in. All opposed. Here passes, that moves us to C, this is another one, we can tell you the order, a retained motion, uh, all this will, uh, has, has discussed earlier.
What was it, postpone, what was the right word?
Postpone until, or twenty one.
Till she got numbers back, forthright, and what's gonna postpone, uh, vote on this?
I move that we postpone C, ten C, until eleven twenty one.
Second.
And first, a second to postpone ordinance, uh, testing, point, compensation, C, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes. That moves us to a limited legal, our request, uh, this is the, uh, the change order.
I move that we, uh, approve the Bartman West change order, amendment number one.
Second.
Passes, all in favor? Terry, last eight, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Whether they passes? That moves us to B, uh, ordinance authorized the city participate in MFCI tag T. Terry, you got any comments on that?
This is the firefighter cancer pool that we had talked about in September, that, um, Murma will cover.
Cancer covered, correct?
Right.
Firefighter.
Murma will reimburse us seventy-five percent of the, um, cost the first year. Sixty-five percent the second year and fifty percent the third year. And they, when I spoke with them earlier today, um, they haven't been set, the rates haven't been set for subsequent years, but Murma is considering, um, to remain at fifty percent reimbursement following year three.
Well, still the full amount was minimal when we talked about it.
Correct, yeah, ninety-five dollars per covered firefighter.
It's definitely the right thing to do.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's a big problem among firefighters, we should want, uh, answer from the, the DOCs, that the stuff coming off of the fire, uh, plan.
Since we postponed ten C, this would be bill two four eight seven now? Is that correct? So I move that we.
Twelve? Two four eight seven, yeah.
Yeah, two four eight seven. I move that we give, uh, bill number two four eight seven its first reading by kind of only.
Second.
And second.
So we have a second, so.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, first, if some of the police get first rate at, at bill number two four eight seven, is that what you said?
Yes. An ordinance of the city of Centralia, Missouri, authorizing the city to participate in Missouri firefighters' critical illness trust and pool, and further authorizing the mayor to execute such documents as may be necessary for the city's partake, participation therein. I move that bill number two four eight seven begin its second reading by kind of only.
Second.
And first, we seconded bill number two four eight seven, begin its second reading by kind of only, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes, second reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Centralia, Missouri, authorizing the city to participate in the Missouri firefighters' critical illness trust and pool, and further authorizing the mayor to execute such documents as be, as may be necessary for the city's participation therein. I move that bill number two four eight seven be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
And first, second, then bill number two four eight seven be adopted by roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes, roll call vote, please.
Olin Motley, yes. Olin Hudson.
Four.
Olin Deckard.
Four.
Olin Rogers.
Four.
Olin Medley.
Yep.
Bill number two four eight seven passes, ordinance number.
Three one five zero.
All right, thank you. Uh, C, uh, repeal of ordinance thirty-one seven, for motion for that, you have any thoughts on that, Terry, with that, with this rule, for quickly?
Yes, so we passed, um, the changes to the Missouri primacy fees, actually at the beginning of this year. And what we did last month was, uh, lowered that rate to what it was before that. So we need to repeal that ordinance, because what we had set it at the beginning of the year is where it's supposed to be. Um, we do not want to lower them. That's a fee that we pay to the state. So the state sets that fee, we break it down into a monthly fee for anyone who's connected to the water service. And, um, that's why it's gotta be worth that. So we just need a motion to repeal what we did last month, ordinance three one four seven.
I make a motion to repeal ordinance three one four seven.
Second.
And first, second for appeal, ordinance three one four seven, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes. That moves us to item twelve. Prevent some license, can we have anything for that?
No.
Thirteen, purchasing, anything for that?
No. Sorry, I'm reading head nods for you, Chris.
All right, all right, for my brother. Hold it, uh, we talked about all of this tonight, but, uh, any other things to add? No, I take it.
Um, I just, uh, one, one quick thing, uh, the USTAX, uh, presented at school board last week, uh, that was received while, um, talking about it in our whole business, 'cause it's something we voted on already, we need to get out there and communicate it with people that we need to get this passed.
It, it is on the backside of the ballot, the very last issue on the ballot. So if we can communicate that with anyone that you can tell that they have to flip their ballot over to vote on it.
Okay.
So I mean, it's, it's a hundred grand of city budget in round numbers. Very round numbers, about a hundred grand, a little over, um, annually in the city budget. It'll go a long way for fire trucks, go a long way for a lot of sidewalk streets, are that what fun?
Well, we're spitting out a revenue that, that we should be collecting here, I mean, it's, it's, excellent, good point.
Well, let's get out to the, if anybody wants to volunteer to go out to organizations, it's, it's a ten minute presentation. And if anybody knows of an organization that would allow me to come present it, I'll present it if I need to.
All right, guys, uh, new business, new business. Hearing nothing, I will say we move on to fourteen, the mayor, the mayor has nothing else to say at this point. Moves us to fifteen, the city administrator, can you make for us, Terry?
Nope, my activity report is in the packet. Um, it's been a pretty busy month, I've met with a lot of people and learning a lot of new things, so it's, still moving forward.
All right, what about the city attorney, she left or she go?
She left.
Okay, so we move to the city clerk, you have, what do you have, Chris, Marlowe?
Um, just a couple of things, next week, uh, Augers Conference down in Springfield, Phyllis and I will be attending that as delegates, voting delegates. Um, after that, kinda start ramping up for health insurance open enrollment in November. Tara will be going to the Murma board meeting on, via this month, I believe, so we should know, we should know rates around that time.
Is it up, anything else? All right, as later on, do you have anything else to give rise? I take it, so I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Wow.
Adjourn, adjourn, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Passes, and there.